Good evening, everyone. It looks like all the council members are present. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successory Agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency on Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. I'll ask Lauren if you could please call roll call.
Councilmember Deloso.
Here.
Councilmember Harden.
Here.
Councilmember Lammon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Good evening, President.
Mayor Harvey. Correct. Mayor Skilman.
Yes, thank you. All right, I'm here and we're getting a bit of an echo, but we'll power through. If everybody could please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, your God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to item four, approval of minutes from the regular meeting on October 27th.
This is Councilmember Harvey moved to approve.
This is Councilmember Lammon. I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can you please take a roll call? I'll vote.
Councilmember Deloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes. All right, so the minutes are approved. We'll move on to item number five, which is announcements. Begin with that meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatycity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888-777. It's our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive customer service and we continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walk-in traffic due to the current health officer order. During this time, our services temporarily transition to phone and web-based as well as appointments by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. Like always, we'd love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info, I-N-F-O, at kattatycity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixel, and Nextdoor. Next, we'll move on to agenda item number six, approval of final agenda. And I'll check in with our city manager, Mr. Obit. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, no proposed changes tonight.
Okay, terrific. So then we'll move on to item seven, citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, I will open up citizens' business and I'll ask Lauren if you could please check in with the attendees.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. And for our attendees tonight to make a public comment, please use the raised hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer or dial 09 if you're using just your telephone. Please listen carefully for the mayor himself to address you by name or phone number and for the audible Zoom notification that you've been unmuted. Once you begin your public comment, your three-minute rule will begin. At this time, I have no raised hands, Mayor Skilman.
Okay, thank you very much for checking. So with that, we will move on to item eight, which is the consent calendar, and we've got items A, B, and C on the consent calendar this evening.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Deloso. If there are no council members needing to approve any items, I would move to approve items A, B, and C.
And this is Councilmember Lammon. I will second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Yes, no raised hands, so we have a motion and a second. I'll ask Lauren if you could please take a roll call vote on the consent calendar.
Councilmember Deloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So items A, B, and C are approved. And we'll move on to item number nine on the agenda, direction on future agenda items. And I'll pause for just a moment, see if hands get raised by council to see if they have anything to put on a future agenda item. Okay, I'm not seeing any raised hands, so I will assume that there's nothing, at least this week, and perhaps... So we will move on to item number 10, which is a regular agenda. And the first item, A, is ratification of nominee for appointment to the Measure G Citizen Oversight Committee. And for that, I will turn it over to our city manager, Damian Obit.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. For this item, I will, well, first of all, just give you a quick overview, although I think everybody knows basics. So with the adoption, the voter's adoption of Measure G, the Citizen Oversight Committee was required to be formed as part of that measure. And resolution, City Council Resolution 2015-64 established the five-member Measure G Oversight Committee. Each member is nominated by a member of the council, which is then ratified by the full council following the planning commission nomination-ratification process. Recently, Michelle Riley, who's Vice Mayor Moore's nominee to the Oversight Committee, due to unforeseen personal circumstances, had to step down from her position. And in response to that, the city put out an application process and advertised in the community voice, the city website, and social media to fill Vice Mayor Moore's vacancy. In response to that, we received two applications. One from Kimberlin Moffett, and the other application was received from Jonathan Rodriguez. Vice Mayor Moore has nominated Kimberlin Moffett for this position, and she's also here attending the meeting tonight as well, if anybody has any questions for her. One more thing I will just point out is that with two city council members leaving the council at the end of the year, we're gonna have two new Measure G Oversight Committee member positions that will be advertised towards the end of this year. And a similar process for planning commission. But that's not what we're talking about tonight, just a heads up, that's coming up during the next couple of months. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. And I see Vice Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, if you'd like to make a comment.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. I don't have any questions at the moment, but I did want to make a comment. Why, may I?
Of course, go ahead.
I just want to thank both of the applicants for applying. I think that's great that citizens are stepping up to serve on these commissions. And I really appreciate that. And I wanted to thank Mr. Rodriguez as well for applying. And welcome, Ms. Moffett, if the council decides to affirm that appointment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Lammon, do you have a question or comments?
A quick question, Madam Mayor. Your city manager, Obit, you mentioned that we will be having two new council members next year. But I was curious if this had worked as it had in the past. Would this not be more of an option for those council members if they chose to do so, to pick a new appointee? Or do they not also have the option to continue with the existing appointee? I simply ask because I've seen that happen many times on many of our committees for some amount of time, particularly when people have served there and put in good service for some years. So I'm wondering, is it the type of thing, is there somewhere that we are required to automatically put this out and invite people from the community? Or is this something that first goes to those two new council members to see what their decision might be on that?
So the question is my understanding, Lauren and I were just working through the details of it this week, because we wouldn't actually be doing anything until probably December, early December on this. But certainly, the existing members can continue on. And, but I believe that the process is, is that it would be put out for advertisement and the existing members can be re-nominated and continue on the, on the committee or commission. But I believe there's a nomination process that has to happen.
Well, if the nomination process is required, then that's fine. I just thought it would be nice if the new council member wanted to continue with one of the existing members to avoid needlessly putting it out to the public. But if there's a requirement, there's a requirement. So thank you for answering that for me.
Great, and I'm not seeing any more hands up with questions. So I will open this up for comment and ask Lauren to check in with the attendees. And I know Ms. Moffett is also off the line, so if you're interested in saying a few words, feel free, but don't feel obligated to do so.
Am I unmuted?
You are. Go ahead.
Oh, well, I just wanted to thank you very much for the nomination.
All right, perfect. Thank you. And Lauren, could you check and see if either of the other attendees wanted to make a public comment? Otherwise, I'll go forward.
Sure, for our attendees tonight, just please use your raised hand icon. And Mayor Skilman, at this time, I see no raised hands.
Okay, well, with that, I will bring you back to the council for potential motion.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Deloso. I too want to just briefly state and thank both individuals for applying. And if there are no further comments, I would be delighted to make a motion.
I see no other hands up, so feel free, Mr. Councilmember Deloso.
I will dive right in. I move to ratify Councilmember Moore's nominee for appointment to the Measure G Citizen Oversight Committee. I would be happy to second that.
Okay, great. We have a motion and a second. I'll ask Lauren if you could please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Deloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Just wondering why she didn't second that.
Looks like she's been dropped off of the Zoom call. Let's pause for just a moment, give her a chance to log back in.
Well, I'm glad to hear it was a Zoom dropout because the suspense was killing you.
It's the never-ending glitches that happen when we're on a virtual world here. Well, shoot, I don't want to have us all... Lauren, would you mind sending her a quick text message and see if she's having internet issues?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Since this is new uncharted territory, should we go ahead and take the rest of the votes? Or should we pause for just a moment so that we can get a full council vote? Damian, what do you vote?
Well, I think if, if the council's okay with this, then we could just move forward on the vote. And then hopefully she'll join us here.
Okay, that works for me. So...
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
This is Vice Mayor Moore. Would that be an issue if it's not a unanimous vote?
I think we would probably then list it as a four with one abstention.
Correct. I think we probably note in the, in the minutes that, Ms. Madam Mayor, that, that we didn't have the attendance of a, of a council member after the hearings, after the items started.
Okay. And is it possible, though, that she can join us then again and vote on the next item as long as she's logged back in? Okay, okay. Well, just so we don't hold this up too long, and I've been checking to see if she ends up attending rooms well, but I'm not seeing...
Mayor Skilman, just so you know, she does keep getting dumped out.
Darn, okay. All right, well, let's continue with the roll call vote and we'll just list her as an abstention due to technical difficulties.
Okay. Councilmember Lammon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes, thank you. And also wanted to add my thank you as well to both of the folks who applied. And ironically, Mr. Rodriguez and I went to the same high school, so that was kind of fun to see his application. Anyhow, I'm sure very different years, just saying. All right. So with that, let's move on to item B, Six-Cycle Regional Housing Needs Assessment Allocation. And for that, we're gonna turn it over to Noah Houche.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman, and members of the council. I'll just wait while my presentation slides load up. And we'll see if I can take control of the presentation. But as was identified, this is an update on the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, RENA, allocation process. Just to give a little bit of background, as the council is aware, for many years, the state has mandated cities and towns must plan for their housing needs. And these plans are implemented through a city or, or community's housing element, and those are adopted on eight-year cycles generally. The State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, is tasked with determining each region's share of housing growth. And that's called the RENA, or Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And those allocations are handed out to a region's council of government, or COGS. And these COGS create a process to allocate the regional RENA to each of the communities within the COG. Sorry for all the acronyms, but just trying to set the table here. And our local COG is the Association of Bay Area Governments. And it's made up of over 100 cities and nine counties that surround the San Francisco Bay. We're currently in the fifth cycle for RENA, which is spans from 2015 to 2023. And over the last few years, as many folks are aware, there's just been a flurry of state legislation that has significantly changed the housing element process and, I would say, housing regulation in general. And so we're starting to look towards the sixth cycle to be ready for that. And as a part of that process, ABAG and MTC created the Housing Methodology Committee. And we have been working over the last year to create the allocation process for our region. Earlier this year, the region was allocated 441,000 units approximately, which is about 135% increase over the current fifth cycle allocation. And this is, you know, a reflection of all of the concerns over the housing in general. And just before I move on to this slide, it just uses, it's important to note now that this uses the data from the Plan Bay Area, which is kind of the regional growth model. It's also called the 2050 Blueprint. So just to continue on the background for a little while, over the last three years, as I mentioned, there's just been a significant amount of legislation, and I just want to touch on a little bit of it, as these explain some of our recent and recent and future efforts in the Community Development Department. So as I mentioned, housing elements have had significant changes. There's increased reporting requirements. We now have to consider social justice elements as we look to understand the needs of the community from the housing perspective. Obviously, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment RENA has increased significantly. And it's, this may trigger the city to start to look to upzone certain properties in the community to meet that future growth that we're being told we need to plan for. And it's critical that we, that we do that because we, sometimes it is required in order to get your housing element certified. And having a certified housing element is very important in today's environment because the state is starting to take a carrot in the stick approach. And the stick is pulling it back grant funding on a variety of topics, not just housing related, if you do not have a certified housing element. So it's important to be able to gain that certification from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Some of the other legislation has limited the cities and counties' abilities to downzone sites. Obviously, everyone's been hearing about accessory dwelling units, and the department has updated our ordinance. We're consistent with state law. And we are starting to see a fair amount of interest in accessory dwelling unit construction. Certain housing applications are now allowed by right, so there is no discretion and no sequel involved in their review. There's been changes to the Housing Accountability Act, and SB 35 is one of the mechanisms providing for by right multifamily housing. It is very prescribed with the circumstances that allow this. But this is kind of pushing the city and, I would say, communities throughout the state to create what are called objective design guidelines. And so that is a very easy way for folks on the development side to be able to just, to identify whether their project meets the design guidelines of the city or not. Policies that say the project must, project design must be in keeping with the community character, as an example, are no longer able to be applied to certain projects. It's just important to know that we are working on objective design guidelines and many other things in response to all of this legislation, trying to prepare the city for the types of housings that we are likely to see and the various mechanisms the state has provided for those projects to be proposed. Kind of keeping with the carrot and the stick analogy, it's very important to note that the state has also funded cities to work on some of these efforts. And we did receive two different grants, which the council has seen in past presentations, the applications for, and got $220,000 to the city to support efforts to respond to this legislation. And I also would like to point out, the, the city has hired, Community Development Department has hired a part-time contract planner to work exclusively on housing projects and housing policy that are grant funded and, and developer funded to help us keep up with this kind of flurry of activities. And I also want to move into the next slide. Lauren, I'm not sure if you can help me advance. There we go. So I just liked this slide. And those of you who were at the October 2019 Housing Workshop, which seems like a lifetime ago, this slide just demonstrates some of the things that were in the mix with regards to state legislation as of April 4th of, of last year. So I just, it's a familiar slide, but I think it does a good job kind of demonstrating all of the various hoops that local communities are trying to jump through in response to the, seems like just the drumbeat of housing coming out of the state legislation. Next slide. So getting into the Housing Methodology Committee, we began meeting on October 2019. We were represented by one elected official, Susan Adams, from Rota Park, one staff member, Jane Riley, who works for PRMD in the County of Sonoma, and I served as the alternate and participated in almost every meeting. Throughout and early in this process, ABAG staff was strongly recommending use of the Plan Bay Area 2050 for the baseline data that went into the housing methodology process. Ultimately, the Housing Methodology Committee voted on a methodology that prioritized putting housing near jobs and high resource or high opportunity areas, as well as transit. I'm sorry, that didn't make it in the slide. And then also voted to use the Plan Bay Area as the baseline data from which to model the growth. The, one of the kind of interesting or maybe unintended consequences is that the use of this data created some really odd anomalies for the rural North Bay. We feel that there, and we have actually determined that there were some errors in the modeling for the potential housing sites that the North Bay could accommodate. And there's a lot more detail in this in the staff report in the attached letter. But the, the, in summary, these errors appear to have potentially increased the, the RENA allocation to the unincorporated areas in the North Bay counties. In response to the letter that was attached to this report, ABAG and MTC staff has provided time and resources to try to resolve these data errors. And individual cities have been communicating, including the City of Cattati, the specific errors that we found in our data. However, no specific commitments were made as to how that would be resolved, if at all. Lauren, next slide. So this slide translates to what we're expecting the City of Cattati to receive for our future RENA allocation. And Lauren, if you'd just advance one more time, and it'll highlight Cattati here, as, you know, our current housing allocation was 137 units, which we feel, we felt fairly comfortable that we were going to be able to meet. However, I will say that the COVID virus has impacted financing for all types of projects, even housing projects. And so some of our housing projects are starting to stumble, but we're still fairly confident that the city could meet our current RENA allocation. And we're starting to look at how we will meet the projected allocation of 270 units, which is about a 97% increase for the City of Cattati. And then if you look there at the unincorporated Sonoma County increase, this demonstrates some of the concerns that were voiced in the letter. Almost 1,000% increase of the housing units going into, into the unincorporated county. It's worth noting that Marin County had almost a 2,000% increase. That was likely somewhat driven by the desire to put housing in areas of high resources so those folks could have the benefit of, of having those resources and amenities nearby. But it's also concerning, given that this goes against the, you know, the tenants, basic tenants of, of good planning, which, you know, we want city-centered growth, we want housing near jobs, we want housing near transit, we want to eliminate sprawl, we want to reduce greenhouse gases, et cetera, et cetera. And there's a lot of concern that allocating so many units to the unincorporated areas of the North Bay counties is counterproductive to all those things, and frankly, just seems almost to be an error. And we have identified that it is an error as such. However, if the data is corrected and the county RENA allocation is reduced, the unincorporated county, it is likely that the consequence of that is that the allocations to the individual cities who have, you know, access to the transit and infrastructure, et cetera, will likely increase. Just wanted to point that out. But we are projecting about 270 units based on the current methodology that was voted on. So Lauren, next up, or next slide, please. So the next step, as mentioned, and the executive board did adopt the methodology, which staff does feel is sound. Our concerns are primarily around the data and the modeling, the foundational modeling efforts, as was noted in the letter attached to the staff report. This methodology is going to the Regional Planning Committee of ABAG two days on November 12th for a final vote. And I apologize for that bullet not being in this slide. Assuming that the Regional Planning Committee votes yes, that, which staff anticipates will happen, that methodology will then go to the Housing Community Development Department for review for the statutory objectives of RENA, which comes out of state legislation and includes things like open space and agricultural preservation, city-centered growth, et cetera. And again, as we've mentioned, the concerns from the staff members are not with the methodology, but some of the data that's, that the modeling is based on. So we do anticipate that HCD will approve the methodology. However, we're trying to get the data corrected in time for the final allocation to be granted. And as a part of that, we're continuing to work with ABAG staff. Cattati staff did review the modeling data, the underlying individual parcel data, and identified several areas where inappropriate growth was, was identified. We've submitted that information to HC, or to ABAG MTC. They've acknowledged receipt, but we have not seen any changes or any concrete responses to date. We will provide a similar comment letter to the, or we intend to provide a similar comment letter if supported by the council, or unless the council identifies significant concerns. That basically combines the letter that is attached to this, the high points of that letter to this report, the, I'm sorry, the letter attached to this report, and the data errors for the City of Cattati and the surrounding unincorporated county that's located within the Cattati sphere of influence to the Regional Planning Committee ahead of their vote on Thursday. We'll continue to work with the surrounding cities, ABAG, HCD staff, to try to look at how those sphere of influence allocations are translated into city allocations, where the specific criteria to do so are met. And then obviously, we will keep excellent records on all of these things because there is a process by which the city could file an appeal of RENA if the council sees the need to do so in the future. So with that, I'll go to my final slide with this, which is just kind of showing the city, all the various zoning districts. And I want to apologize, there were some typos in the staff report I noticed, and I do apologize for those. In addition, I know it's a very tense topic, and there is a lot of information, so I am happy to take any questions. And obviously, we'll translate any comments into our comment letter that goes into the ABAG MTC. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. And you're right, that was a lot of information. So thank you for organizing it and presenting it. And I've got a couple hands up. So first I'll turn it over to Councilmember Deloso, see if there are any questions he has for you. Go ahead, Councilmember Deloso.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. And Noah, thank you very much for the presentation. I know when I read the staff report, my head pretty much exploded. Really, some unfathomable numbers. As I got deeper into the staff report and eventually read the letter that went to SCTA or from SCTA, RCPA, and so on, from September, those errors that appear to, I'm going to be as polite as I can, but that appear to be undertaken by those who came up with these numbers for the various entities and unincorporated areas is so unacceptable in today's technology with all kinds of detailed satellite images, information from the various jurisdictions, ground truthing this before you come up with a table that shows these numbers. It's so unacceptable. And, and I applaud you and other members of that committee for getting that letter off. I will say that I'm beyond frustrated that you apparently still haven't gotten any kind of a response, and the clock is ticking. And I wanted to first, I guess, confirm that you did say you've not gotten any response back.
Are they confirmed receipt of our comments and anyone else in the county who has submitted comments? They have not committed to how they plan to address those comments.
Yeah, which is the more critical part. Thank you. We got your letter. Goodbye. That's just, again, it's not acceptable. I, you know, I have a hard time trying to figure out, you know, we all love the Bay Area, we all love California, and I'm just kind of making generalities there. I don't think we all do, but I do. And I know I read not too long ago, in 2019, was the most current data that I came up with, that I wrote some notes here. In just the second quarter of 2019, 28,000 people left the San Francisco Bay Area. So we're kind of calling this one large metropolis area that we have here, which was double from the previous year. And, you know, a lot of that has to do with, with prices. I think a lot of it may also have to do with quality of life. You know, I moved from San Francisco to Sun County in 1972, I believe it was, pre-teen years. And even going through middle school and high school, I was noticing more and more and more people on the freeways, on the side roads, more pollution days. It was all too obvious to me. So we, we have a huge problem in our hands here, this growth management that we're all trying to wrap our head around. But we can't, we can't sacrifice all these natural resources for the sake of building more and more and more. And I don't have an answer. That's the sad part. And I apologize for that to everybody. But, you know, one question, though, I did have, Noah, for you, was I know that the state law, the RENA state law mentions that cities or counties must plan for the housing needs of the residents. And, and I think that might even be a direct quote out of that law. But I know it's certainly at the best paraphrased. So I guess here's one thing I couldn't find. What happens if we don't meet in whatever time period we're looking at, the next eight years, if it's that, if we don't meet those numbers? You know, I, I get that we don't get a certified housing plan, we meet, and I get extra funding, which is critical, especially for small cities like us. But if we plan for it, but they don't come to fruition, what are the consequences at that point?
Yeah, that's a good question. So as long as we plan for it, and we can demonstrate we can meet that allocation or that number, then we will get our housing element certified. There currently is not a penalty for not achieving your RENA. There is, and it's, RENA has always been aspirational, I would say, except for with the last, the cycle we're in currently, it was much more pragmatic because it was coming out of the recession, and the state was trying to recognize the reality of getting projects funded and, and frankly, even units bought and sold, with everybody suffering so much economically. It does seem to be going back towards the aspirational numbers. And that's the million-dollar question, so to speak, is that what's going to happen as far as potential penalties should cities not be able to meet these? Because cities aren't developers. We could do the work to plan for the housing and accommodate it, but ultimately, housing is a market-driven commodity, so to speak, in a lot of ways.
Absolutely. I totally agree. Just one last question, and thank you for the council for indulging me this long. I'm curious, I know this doesn't impact Cattati, but in... for indulging me this long. I'm curious, I know this doesn't impact Katati, but in our post-fire era that we're in here in Sonoma County, a number of homes have been rebuilt. Now, those aren't, at least I don't believe those would be considered new homes, but do they get counted towards Rena numbers? Because technically, you're just sort of putting back what was in place. And in fact, in most cases, probably even less. But how do those factor into the equation?
Yeah, it is my understanding they do not count towards your Rena.
Because they were existing.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that, those are my concerns and questions that I have for right now. I may have some more later, but thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. No, it's a good discussion. So Councilmember Lammon, you've got your hand up. Do you have a question as well?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Howes. So one thing that wasn't a hundred percent clear to me in reading the report until I heard you, your presentation, was if I understand it correctly, that even if the fine folks at A-BAG, MTC, and Rena are willing to correct the fairly significant errors in data that they're basing this long-term planning on, it wouldn't change the required numbers, it would simply move them. So what looks like an absolutely incredible increase in sprawl into the county would just become an incredibly large amount of sprawl in the cities, although some of them at least would be centered in somewhat appropriate areas by housing, transportation, jobs. So do I understand that correctly, that that number isn't open, that basically we're being made to fit a preset number rather than taking a look actually at the location of what we have available?
That is my understanding, is that the county allocation, so to speak, the overall number of units in Sonoma County, Napa County, Reno, et cetera, is not anticipated to shift significantly, even if the the underlying growth projecting data is fine-tuned.
Right. You know, it's interesting. Organizations like A-BAG and MTC, councils of government, essentially, they're designed so we can all come together in a larger area to make really big decisions, and most importantly, share resources in an equitable way, which I think is a great way to do business, but only if it works. And only if you're truly representing the interests and understand the regions you're working with. And I wasn't as surprised because some of my colleagues see this report, because I've kind of seen this for some time now when it comes to MTC, certainly. But that's an editorial comment. One more question. So you talk about the impacts of going without a certified housing element. It sounds like that is such a bad result potentially for the city, it's not even feasible. What would that look like for a city like Katati? Is it even a potential option? And if it is an option, how big a haircut is it? Because I know there's probably a lot of other cities from what I'm hearing are asking the same questions and thinking the same thing.
Yeah, I would say from, as your community development director and just, you know, planner, it's, it would not be something that would ever be advocated to pursue not having a certified housing element. And it's, it's less because of the, the growth accommodation, and more just because of all of the, the various and holistic housing policies that are part of the housing element. So obviously, growth is a very community-specific conversation. But from your, you know, it's my professional opinion that every city should always strive to have a certified housing element because they do address a variety of housing needs, not just growth. And the growth situation specifically, I guess, would be recommended to be tackled on an individualized basis. And if that were the sole reason not to have a certified housing element, that cities or counties could kind of choose to engage directly with the state on that issue. I will say, some of the new legislation does give the state the authority to file litigation against communities, and we have started to see, see some of that litigation take place only in Southern California to date.
Interesting. Well, this is to be, it's nothing new in a way, it's an old war, just with some new disguises on it. I mean, certainly, the counties north of San Francisco, for the last three, four decades, the war's been sprawl versus smart growth. Before, there wasn't even a term for smart growth. People just knew they didn't want what had happened in the Bay Area, the southern part of the Bay Area, to happen in the northern part of the Bay Area. And unfortunately, now it seems that sprawl is under a new name. It's kind of hiding under a mask of a justified need for housing, but it's certainly be used to drive some results that may be very problematic. I have this worry that MTC and A-BAG continue to try to improve the region till they absolutely ruin it. So one last question for you. You mentioned potentially sending a comment letter from the council. If the council wants, we do. I personally would certainly like to ask the powers that be to at least resolve these questions with data and understand what they're asking and dealing with, and what the impacts might be before they move forward. It seems a small requirement to ask that people actually understand what they're doing before they vote on something when they know there might be problems with data behind it. So I just like to put that forward if, if we're going to do a comment letter. I don't know if that would be helpful. I guess that's the question, if there's a sense that there's any openness at all. It's, I'm kind of hearing mixed messaging here. In the sense I'm getting it, doesn't really seem like there's not a lot of willingness to listen and deal with some of the large problems that our staff in this region found really in a very short amount of time.
Yeah, I would very much appreciate council authorizing such a letter and potentially elevating the, the name, so to speak, the sign, on the signature line. And I do agree with your comment that it's been a very, it's kind of been a, basically, all the issues came to a head at the end of the process. And as we're raising these, we seem to be kind of the small fish in the big pond. And we're kind of, the results seem to demonstrate that.
Well, yeah, this is the problem, because like many of these solutions, we've seen they're driven for other areas where they actually may fit better. Unfortunately, all the areas under the control of A-BAG and MTC are not the same. Different circumstances, different geography, different populations, different problems. And the whole concept of developing housing where we don't even plan to have infrastructure for decades to come, but making those requirements for housing now, I don't know. I think we've had enough comment on it, but I definitely hope my colleagues support me. I will be asking after public comment for a comment letter to go forward. If we can at least try and drive a better result and a better, more informed decision, I think that would be helpful. I would like to thank you for all your efforts and all the staff in the county for working up to this. I know you guys have done an excellent job in trying to bend this to a straighter arc, so I appreciate those efforts.
Okay, thank you. And I see Councilmember Harvey, you've got your hand up. Have you got some questions as well?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Noah, for the presentation. So if I'm correct, this letter was written on nine, and there have been no efforts to respond to this letter, even though there are errors in their data. Is that correct?
That is my understanding. If there have been efforts, they have not been communicated to us.
Yet they, as I also heard, I thought, they are voting on this in two days.
That's correct. They're voting on the methodology which uses this data as the baseline. That's correct.
So therefore, I think it was said earlier by one of the other council members, basically, thanks for writing a letter, but here it is. Take it.
That has been the response to the date.
Okay. So we're not exactly a transportation hub, you know, in case that's obvious. We've done our developments by our train station. And as was pointed out, you know, we're not developers. So even though we've entitled that project, that project sits there, they have funding for it. And so nothing in all of this, you know, is very helpful to actually making any of this happen. And there's nothing in what you've seen help and is correct?
That is correct.
And so even if they certify our housing element, we go through all these hoops, and we do whatever's needed to certify housing, and there's no help with any funding in order to make it actually happen, correct?
I would say the state is putting a significant amount of funding towards housing, but we're the most populous state in the country, and, you know, we've, it hasn't translated to a lot of development in Katati. That's absolutely correct.
Well, it appears from what I've seen in, in the different grants and whatever, you know, methodologies that have happened, it's going to the much more metropolitan areas. It's going to the bigger cities. It's going to the bigger developments. I mean, little cities like ours, it's not coming towards us. I would even go as so far as to say, and you can, even within our county, the grants and things that are available aren't coming to our community. Because didn't, I think they tap into some of the, the funding that was out there for Sonoma County, and they didn't get very far?
Yeah, I, what I do, what I have been told, and this is kind of specific to some of the affordable housing funding, is that the, the tax credit program, which was by far the most popular funding mechanism for affordable housing, the regulations of how that those projects were scored to see who would qualify and who would essentially be granted the money, were changed at the last minute this year, allowing a lot more for-profit projects to qualify, and all of the affordable housing folks were left flat-footed. And that change directly impacted the Katati stations projects' ability to get financing in that cycle.
Okay. And then one last question, you know, we, and I don't think this is unique to Sonoma County, but almost everywhere in the county, we've gone to great lengths to have urban growth boundaries. And this almost flies in the face of this acting like, well, there shouldn't be urban growth boundary, that there should just be sprawl everywhere. Is there anything in any of this that at least acknowledges urban growth boundaries?
So the, the HCD process, absolutely, which is the state process to approve the allocation formula, so to speak, absolutely recognizes preserving agriculture, city center growth, et cetera. It's, the problem is that we're seeing is that the, the A-BAG model, and there's a lot of reasons that I could speculate, but I wasn't behind it, but essentially, from my perspective, seem to identify county parcels that may have been subject to high-intensity uses, and just blanket them saying that that's a site for high-density housing. And frankly, I'll just point out, Carl's Body Shop was one of those sites that I identified at looking at the county data and commented on, saying, you know, yes, you might see a lot of structures and a lot of cars out there. A body shop at essentially scrapyard is not a good location to try to suit for housing or, or plan for growth of housing. And there's just, there's examples throughout the county of those types of things.
And you're saying, you're saying that as an example, it is just how ridiculous this is, given that that's away from all transportation, it's away from jobs, it's away from, you know, pretty much anything and everything. I mean, it's way out there. So
That's correct.
It's, that would be ridiculous to put high-density housing there.
Yeah. It's a sad, it's a sad perspective that some of the modeling was based on a lack of understanding of our community, just to be frank.
Well, and that really is ridiculous, because it should be a give and take in order to place the things. Okay, so, so let's accept the fact that the number is X. And given what X is, there should be really a good methodology behind where that should be. And when things show up, don't make any sense, there should be a process to be able to explain and work through why that doesn't make sense, and then adjustments have, have to happen accordingly. And I'm hearing that there's not such a process.
Yeah, the A-BAG MTC staff, their response to this concern is that they had provided this data a year ago, which frankly, was in a spreadsheet format, not graphically represented, did not translate well to a good understanding of how it would be used. But so they said, we collectively, we should have commented and identified this, these errors a year plus ago when they sent us the spreadsheet asking for comments.
So can you reiterate again for me, our only recourse, it sounds like, is going to be, we can of course thread a letter, is what I'm hearing, but our only real recourse is to appeal, because it sounds like this is going to be voted on and shoved down our throat day after tomorrow?
That is my understanding. That is my understanding, yes.
And that is not really an, what would that appeal process look like? Would that be a legal suit against the state?
No, it's a, it's actually, it's a, it's a formalized appeal process, similar to our own localized appeal processes where local communities can engage with HCD on the Rena, I think, to vet out these types of issues and, and point out the reasons why they feel the Rena is not appropriate or acceptable, et cetera. I will say, that's my speculating, as I have not been a part of one of those processes or thoroughly vetted it myself personally.
So we don't even, didn't really know whether or not anyone has ever been even successful in, in going through that process and changing anything?
I think there have been some successful cases over the years, but one of the other elements is that because there's been so much legislation regarding housing and housing elements, et cetera, we're frankly all playing catch-up. And I would, I would, I don't want to speculate, but I would, I'm almost certain not everyone has a clear understanding of every single piece of legislation that has come out of the state recently, and how, basically, the consequences of its implementation.
Yeah, I mean, that graphic that you put up there, that picture that was kind of thrown out there when the whole CASA thing was going on, I mean, we have built such an extremely complicated web. It's amazing that anybody can do anything or figure anything out. Well, thank you, Noah. That's all my questions for now, Mayor. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, sorry, just before you move on to the next comment, and this may, may be helpful or may just be confusing. I apologize if it's confusing. But I think if, if, you know, based on what Noah's been saying about the, I guess, the assumption is that the allocated numbers are sort of contained within the county. So discussions moving forward are about, you know, potentially how those numbers get moved around between jurisdictions. It sounds like is where we are right now. And when we get to, when we get to our housing elements, certainly, we can, with whatever number we're given, we can certainly control what that looks like and where that is, within some, some reason, I guess, within our jurisdiction. But then the concern is, you know, for the county of Sonoma, are they, are they putting housing outside of, you know, in our sphere of influence, in, you know, all these different cities, outside of our city limits? So I don't know. I mean, maybe, Noah, you can add on to this, but if, once we get through this process, and let's say the numbers are all assigned, I assume as we all collectively develop our new housing all collectively develop our new housing elements, that there'll be some interplay between the jurisdictions, hopefully, as they kind of plan out where the housing is actually going to be put?
Yeah, everything you said is accurate, Damian, and I, hopefully we can have some conversations. And one of the interesting elements is, you know, the county generally is not a utility provider and all housing needs utilities. And so in, in my experience, there would, there, in, in the past, there would be some negotiation and give and take between the jurisdiction that's providing the utilities, which is generally the cities, and the jurisdiction that's approving the projects in these, you know, county unincorporated areas directly adjacent to cities, you know, on their border, in their sphere of influence. One of the other unique things that I hate to say it, I apologize, it's going to be more frustrating, was historically, uh, cities and counties could, could share in those RENA credits. And some of the state legislation appears to have taken away that ability for us to even kind of, I don't want to say double dip, but both take credit for portions of the units that are built outside of one jurisdiction because another one is essentially allowing it by granting utilities. So I mean, the takeaway is that yes, we could coordinate it. And as was referenced by the council discussion, the, the planning communities and planning, uh, directors in this county are very, very coordinated. We work together very well. We generally all know each other and we meet regularly. So that is a good opportunity for us to try to do these things. And we're just going to have to look for those chances where they provide themselves and hope that the state legislation hasn't handcuffed us, um, too much to be able to do something.
Okay, thank you. And we've got Vice Mayor Moore. I see your hand is up. Do you have questions for Noah?
I have way too many questions that we could fit into this Zoom on this particular issue. In addition to all of the concerns raised by the fellow council members, to me, it seems as if there were so many presumptions that were this particular plan was based on. And one of the presumptions that they didn't take into consideration, I think, is the pandemic. And what that's done to the future of work and the issues around transportation planning. Be, because as an example, and, and I don't know if this is something that could be brought up to the board, you know, Thursday. Just in one public sector component, the state of California, seventy-three percent of the employees are working from home. So now you don't, I mean, and if you look at some of the other industries, of course, I don't know what the numbers are specifically. But you know, you don't have the transportation issue. So when you look at a plan that has the presumption that you need these, uh, one component being the transportation, I think that's very short-sighted. And of course, nobody's going to predict a pandemic. But, um, it is kind of short-sighted in how they develop this plan in addition to some of the other areas. So I would strongly support a, a letter to, um, uh, ABA and to the, uh, board on this particular issue, indicating how much of a concern we have and how, um, this cookie cutter approach is, is not really, addressing the complete picture of a need that we do have. So that would be all I would want to add to that, um, because it's such a difficult, difficult, uh, topic to try to, um, get into the specifics on there. Overall, um, I, I would support a, a strongly worded letter, although I, I'm not certain what the, um, outcome might be on that or if they would even acknowledge it as they hadn't acknowledged the others, but that, that's my feeling on this particular issue.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I know it's, it's just a receive and provide direction. Um, but I will open it up to public comment and then bring it back to council. So more on Alaska, people check in with, um, our attendees.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. For our attendees tonight, please use your raised hand icon, either on your desktop or smart device or by dialing star night. There's going to decide I have no raised hand.
Okay, thank you for checking. Um, and so I'll bring it back to council, uh, Councilmember Landman. I saw your hand had gone up. Did you have, uh, comments or further questions?
Well, it was actually kind of a late blooming question. I hate to double dip, so I'm glad you went to public comment. This way I feel like I'm not quite. But first of all, I agree with my colleague Vice Mayor Moore. I felt very strongly about the numerous obvious inadequacies of, of this plan and the problems attended with it and was very supportive of the letter trying to hopefully guided by real data than, rather than erroneous data. But it occurs to me now, if this train is coming one way or the other, and if the requirement is we will take these numbers and that's that, and I guess I should be grateful we're not Marin because I think they've got about a two thousand percent increase or something amazing like that. But then some really difficult questions come into mind if that's the case. It makes me rethink my thoughts about a letter. I have to ask, it sounds like we're putting into two choices here. Sprawl into the county destroying the UGB that we've all supported and that our community support, or vastly increasing the numbers in our town, which is something I know our people in our towns and cities in this county would not support or like either. I mean, what, may, let me ask you, Mr. House. If those numbers were redistributed throughout the cities, uh, the march had taken out the county, can you even hazard a guess of what that would look like for Kattati? How big of an increase? And, uh, at what time would we call ourselves Ronard Park Jr.?
Yeah, I will say any, any, any response I provide would be pure speculation. However, uh, based on some of the, the earlier modeling, I was looking at, uh, units being allocated to Kattati at potentially upwards of three hundred and forty, uh, units over the course of eight-year, the next eight-year cycle. So that was kind of the worst-case, uh, modeling that I had seen. And then, and there is some benefits to being the smallest community in the, in the county, the smallest incorporated city. And then the other, uh, if you want to look for some silver lining, the other kind of positive element is that the city of Santa Rosa is absolutely willing to take the density and the growth. So I'm sure most of the folks are aware that they're trying to increase density in their downtown. They are essentially, uh, opening their doors to high-rise. And so some of those, a big chunk of those numbers could be allocated to the city of Santa Rosa, essentially with them volunteering to take them, which would take some of the pressure off some of the more rural, uh, communities such as Kattati.
Well, I recognize this is speculation, but that's helpful even if it is a rough assessment because what I was looking at are roughly a hundred percent increase from one thirty-seven to two seventy. I was concerned about much larger numbers, stretching it to three forty indeed would be problematic and would have impacts on the, the look and feel and quality of life in this community. But it's perhaps better than destroying the UGB too and all the, because that would just continue to go. Once you open that door, Sonoma County becomes San Jose over the decade or two. So, um, I think that answered that for me. I'm back to agreeing with the strong letter, uh, requesting that they improve and perfect their numbers, uh, before they approve this. Bottom line, ask them not to vote on a methodology that is based on demonstrably bad data. That's a reasonable request, but was she able to ask for it, I think? So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely. Um, so Noah, we've had the presentation provided and, uh, do you feel you've been given enough input and direction to move forward with next steps?
Uh, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I would just repeat back to the council in summary. Uh, the city council has serious concerns over the data errors being continued forward with the recommendation and requests that the, the executive committee create a process to take input and correct errors, even if they choose to forward on the methodology. The letter should request resolution of these data problems as soon as possible, obviously. And kind of reiterate that, uh, one size does not fit all, although they are trying to create that process. And ask that they do not vote on a methodology based on, uh, demonstrably bad data to quote Cosmical Limit. Is that a good summary of the council input?
Yeah, that sounds, yes, good.
I have to say, Madam Mayor, I can hardly wait to read that letter. Thank you.
Okay, terrific.
Madam Mayor, I will, it's going to be last minute and I apologize, obviously we have two days and tomorrow's a holiday. Uh, but I will ask that either you sign or the council, uh, authorized city manager obeyed to sign on the council's behalf just to facilitate being able to get it in.
Um, yes, and I'll, I'll let you know too, I'm, I'm around this week. I am actually working tomorrow uh, because my office is not closing despite the court holiday. Um, so, uh, I will be around and available to, to sign anything. If that is the, and if obviously if it's, it's easier than we can go with, um, having Damian sign it, but I will make myself available to do so.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that fin, finished, we can move on to item eleven, which is the city manager's report. So I'll turn it over to City Manager Damian Ovid.
You, Mayor, members of the council, um, so we are expecting some cold weather. Well, we already have cold weather, but expecting more cold weather this week as well as rainfall later this week. So, uh, knock on wood, hopefully the change in weather gets us past, uh, fire season and the PSPS season this year. Um, on the topic of COVID, so as, uh, you may have read the newspaper today, the county, um, well, you probably knew this already, but the county's currently in red for two out of the three required state metrics. Um, the board of supervisors met, discussed this today. Uh, because the county is still in purple on one of the three metrics, which is the adjusted case rate metric. Currently, as of November fourth, it stands at eleven point one cases per, um, hundred thousand. And it needs to be at or below seven to move into the red. The county is trying to get private lab data that's not directly reported to the state. The state data system, um, included in the state data so that it would, um, if there's enough tests there, it could modify the adjustment factor for the adjusted case rate and lower, potentially lower the case rate. It's unlikely to lower to seven, in my opinion, but, um, it'll move us in that direction at least. And, um, you know, kind of running counter to this, you know, as much as I think we all want to finally get out of purple, uh, we're seeing cases nationally and even within the state, but within trending upward, um, within the state, certainly a lot, led a lot lower numbers than we're seeing, um, in other states right now. But, um, it does seem to be kind of resurging a bit in, in, um, the country. So hopefully that doesn't work against us. So Public Works is working on a water system vulnerability assessment that's required, um, as part of the American Water Infrastructure Act of twenty eighteen. And so, um, our first assessments were done in two thousand and two. Those were required as part of the Bioterrorism Act and, um, staff will prepare what's called the Risk and Resilience Assessment and Emergency Response Plan in accordance with this latest legislation. The state has provided templates and guidelines and will be doing this work in-house. So, um, this will be, um, in parallel actually with the local hazard mitigation planning process that we're doing this, um, with, with the county. It's a county-wide process. Um, we have our own chapter in that. And, um, working directly with, uh, the Office of Emergency Services and FEMA, um, with some grant money to do our own element there. So all this stuff kind of works in parallel. Um, outdoor dining. Uh, since we're still in purple, um, any dining still has to be a hundred percent outdoors, um, with certain mitigations that are prescribed by the state. And, um, as you all know, um, uh, as was approved by the council, we've moved forward with, um, purchasing tents and working on, um, getting them erected in downtown. And, um, just to give you all an update, Public Works has completed the modular platforms, um, for the area in front of the Redwood Cafe. So that would be in the parking stalls there in front of the Redwood Cafe. Uh, because the cross slope of the street is too steep to put tables on, so you have to create essentially like a wood, um, dance floor, so to speak, that goes out from the sidewalk. And, uh, Public Works, Public Works has completed that. We just, uh, received the tents, uh, yesterday. So we're moving forward on getting all that, um, getting use agreements out to the businesses this week and getting them hopefully installed, um, next week or the week after, but here pretty quick. Um, the other tents that are going up is, um, a tent over the patio. Uh, at least the tents that are planned to go up in the very short term here are a tent over the patio and Cafe Salsa. It's a twenty by twenty tent. A twenty by sixty tent is in front of Redwood Cafe. Um, another twenty by sixty tent in front of Spankies and Friar Tux and a twenty by twenty in front of Kattati Coffee in the downtown. And then we have some extra tents and we're working on a process to, um, if those businesses that may need that, um, sort of a phase two implementation. All right, so, um, we are also for the holiday season planning a toy drive and we're partnering with Rotary this year on that. And so we're going to the barrels and the signup sheets for any families that, um, wanna, that are in need and want to sign up for toys. The barrels and the signup sheet will be available by December first. And delivery weekend is expected on December nineteenth through twentieth. So this will all be, um, you know, in accordance with, uh, COVID protocols. So, um, Santa will be dropping the toys. And then, um, next Friday, the twentieth, we're holding our third drive-in movie this year, um, showing Ratatouille at six thirty at, uh, St. Joseph's Park and Ride. Uh, we do currently have some spaces left, but expect to be sold out again, um, like the prior two movies we've shown up there. And then on, um, Friday, December eighteenth, um, just before Christmas, we're showing Elf uh, out of that, out of the park and ride to celebrate the holidays. We also, um, to switch back to a little bit more near-term stuff, uh, on October twenty-ninth, city and police staff went through Kattati to homes to bring children and families, um, the Halloween Roadshow Parade. And so we were able to connect with over forty children in Kattati and they each received a parade in front of their house and candy for each vehicle and actually, um, families on the sidewalk walking from the park or wherever they happen to be, um, sometimes got surprised with a sudden convoy of vehicles that stopped and threw a bunch of candy at them. So everyone had a lot of fun. And, um, the families were grateful for an alternative to trick-or-treat and trick-or-treating the neighborhoods during, um, during COVID. And then on Halloween itself, we celebrated Kattati Kalian without more trick-or-treating, um, covering over twenty-five Kattati businesses, handing out candies to children, um, throughout the city, primarily centered in downtown, but also in the Oliver Shopping Center and, um, over, and, um, uh, I think the farthest west business was, uh, Grab South over there, um, on Redwood Drive. So it was, uh, hugely successful, I think, this year and it looks, it's looking like something that we, um, will probably try to do, uh, moving forward in future years. We also have Kattati, um, Camp Kattati Thanksgiving Break Camp coming up. Um, it's a Monday through Wednesday camp the week of Thanksgiving for kids that are off school, but, um, families that are still working. We do have some space left if, uh, you need or anybody needs, um, childcare during that week. And, um, of course, the camp will follow the, the state health code requirement for camp to provide a safe but fun experience. And then, um, uh, sorry, jumping around a little bit back to, uh, back to Christmas. So we also have a mailbox outside City Hall, um, front door is there. It's a direct line to Santa if anybody wants to send a, uh, letter to Santa or the North, send a letter up to the North Pole. And if, uh, children, I think it's primarily children. I don't, I don't think adults are supposed to be doing this, but, um, children can write letters to Santa and it will, it is dropped off with a self-addressed stamped envelope. They will get a return letter from Santa. And those letters are accepted through December sixth. We're also, uh, working on a variety of other events for, um, for the holidays, including a virtual holiday tree lighting, um, with a message from Santa and a breakfast with Santa to-go events. So stay tuned for more. So stay tuned for more on those soon on the social media pages and website. We're also, well, beginning this Thursday, we're also putting a donation bin in front of City Hall to collect non-perishable food items for the Redwood Empire Food Bank. And if anybody would like to provide food for those in need this holiday season, there will be a bin there through the holiday season. And then last holiday thing is the Katati Chamber of Commerce is currently accepting vendor applications for a downtown shopping stroll, outdoor shopping experience, which is currently scheduled for Saturday, December fifth. This year will be different than past years. There will be no live music, because any sort of thing like that that encourages people to congregate is off the table this year. But there will be plenty of local gift-buying and outdoor dining opportunities to, for people that are looking for gifts or people that want to just come down and support some Katati businesses. If anybody has any questions about that or needs any more information on city programs and events, you can always also contact Ashley Wilson at six-six-five-four-two-two-two or A. Wilson at kataticy.org. And the latest information is also always posted on the city website and the city's Facebook and Instagram pages. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. And it looks like Councilmember Landman may have a question. Go ahead, Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, yeah. One question, but first I do want to thank you, Mr. Obed, and all the staff, for the efforts you seem to always make, whether it's emergencies or at any time, to provide service to the public, but particularly to try to provide a Halloween experience during this terrible pandemic that we're all living through for the children. Greatly appreciated. The question I wanted to ask is much more, Dana. I wondered if you could give me an update on the proposed new intersection at West School and West Sierra. I remember we were talking with Caltrans some weeks ago, and the time had some deal of nebulousness to us, but it should be hopefully remotely soon. I wonder how that's going.
Oh, yeah, we were expecting to get the encroachment permit when I reported on this at the last council meeting. Apparently, and, you know, Craig Scott could weigh in if he has some more he wants to add to this. But basically, I think what happened was Caltrans unexpectedly hit us with what they call an ICE request, which is an intersection control evaluation, which we quickly put together, turned it around, and sent it back, or are sending it back to them within the ten-day period of their comment letter. So it is happening, hopefully, much sooner rather than later. But it was a little bump in the road that we got that we didn't expect.
So we still think this might happen this calendar year, probably? Is it still in that timeline, would you think, Mr. Obed?
Yeah, I'm hoping far in advance at the actual end of the year, but we're continuing to push hard on it.
I understand complexity and some degree of uncertainty always is a natural result of dealing with a big agency like Caltrans. So I appreciate the efforts. I can tell you that many people over in the neighborhood that deals with that intersection on a regular basis will be very appreciative of this. So look forward to it. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I would, just in line with our conversation tonight, I would put the ICE request in the one-size-fits-all type request coming out of the Bay area for us. Or one, it doesn't fit all, I think.
Okay, perfect. And I'm not seeing any more hands up with questions, but I will pause briefly. Okay, no, I think we are good. So thank you very much for that report. And with that, we'll move on to item twelve, city council member reports. I will start it off by saying I do not have anything to report out this summer round. But I will check in and see if there are other council members that have items to report out. Councilmember Harvey, I see you've got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I'll try and, I'll try and be quick. So we had a special Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting, and we keep moving along on the sustainable groundwater management criteria. So we were given the next draft for the degraded water quality. And just to remind folks, there are basically six, or...
Your audio cut out right after you said "basically six," so please repeat that.
Okay, so there's five. And we are, we did the degraded water quality, and they're moving along a special meeting to approve that draft. So that was October twenty-ninth. No, the first Monday of November, we had our Water Advisory Committee meeting. And just a couple of highlights, we received a 2020 EPA Water Sense Excellent Awards again. And it was nice that Veronica Blut of the Water Sense, the EPA Water Sense group, actually was on our Zoom call to actually present the awards, which was nice. And just so folks know, we, this was our twelfth and thirteenth year for the we have done, are being utilized by other agencies. So we are definitely an example. And then the other thing, just so people know, because I know it's been super, super dry, and I just want to remind folks that because of the work that we've done with the federal government, we were able to have eleven thousand extra acre feet that we were able to keep in Lake Mendocino. And so that's really, really helpful. So that program has been a wonderful program, and there are many, many others across the United States looking at that program, since we're the first to do that. So those are the big ones. And lastly, they're moving forward on the Potter Valley.
Darn it, your audio cut, sorry, your audio cut out again after the new Potter Valley project.
Okay, sorry, I'm having definite internet issues tonight. So we did a letter to FERC to look at the socioeconomic issues surrounding the removal of the dam at Potter Valley. So that was an approval that we sent a letter, because we were questioning some of the things in that. So that's all I have to report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not seeing any other hands up, so I will assume that, oh, hi. I went too quickly. Vice Mayor Moore, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to report out that I did attend the Chamber of Commerce virtual meeting today, and Damian was gracious enough to pretty much update what's going on with the Chamber of Commerce. And then I did want to report out that I thought it was a great success that Measure S passed, and I wanted to congratulate all of the candidates for a very well-run campaign in spite of being in a pandemic, and to congratulate the winners that will be on the council and the return of Councilmember Harvey. So thank you.
Okay, thank you for the comments. And I'm not seeing any other hands, so I will cautiously move on. Okay, so we'll move on to item thirteen, which is public comment on non-action agenda items. So I'll ask Lauren to check and see if anybody, any of the attendees have comments on anything that's on the agenda that was not an action item.
Thank you, Ms. Melman. At this time, I see no raised hands.
Okay, and then I will ask you the question, Lauren, was there any other information received after the agenda was posted? Nothing further. Okay, well, thank you all for attending this evening. And please stay safe, be careful out there, and we'll get through this day by day. With that, I will quickly check, see no hands up, okay. We'll move to adjourn this meeting at eight-thirty PM. Thank you guys so much, and have a good two weeks.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.